Ms. Kidby.
Here.
Ms. Reinbold.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Could I get everyone to stand for a brief moment of silence followed by the colors and the pledge of allegiance they will be presented to us tonight from the Brookpoint High School Junior ROTC Navy.
Code.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Ready. Cut. Right face. March. Forward. March.
They always look so sharp, don't they? I'm always so impressed with our junior ROTC units. That one in particular looked very sharp. Thank you, Sky Wen, Joseph Hendricks, Anthony Russell, Logan Pettrini, Thrawn Watkins. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That takes us to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right. That takes us to awards and recognitions. I don't believe we have any awards at this point, so that takes us to our citizens' comments. I do have four folks that have signed up. We'll start with Michelle Kopp, followed by Julie Craig, then Davis Grant, and Sharon Foley. In that order, please.
Dear school board, my name is Michelle Kopp. I live at 9 Kennisaw Drive, and I am here tonight as a representative of a community group known as the Stafford Citizens for School Parity. Following the redistricting votes of February 24th, a group of citizens organized in an attempt to understand what happened. This body passed two redistricting plans: a middle school plan, which had not been devised prior to February 21st, and an elementary plan, whose public hearing was held one hour prior to the vote. There was no feedback from the board on why either plan, either adopted plan surpassed all others and were worthy of adoption. Several citizens requested the board provide a public statement to support their vote, but none were offered. We are not whiners that don't like getting our way. In fact, many of those who have expressed their support were not even impacted by the redistricting decisions. We are not in any way fighting to avoid the redistricting decisions. We are not fighting to avoid the redistricting of lower-income neighborhoods to SMS. We will embrace the new members of our community, just like we have always done at Stafford Middle School, and we will make everyone welcome. That is not what this is about. We are united as taxpayers and constituents who demand the school board to follow their processes consistently and fairly for all. We do not want this body to implement new plans without putting them through the same rigorous evaluation process used to judge all previously suggested plans. We expect our elected officials to be transparent, with reasoning behind their decisions, and we will hold you accountable. Your redistricting processes included data collection by staff, review of options by established committees, presentation of committee recommendation to the board, and public hearings on the recommended options. We ask that both the 1003 revised middle school redistricting option and the revised 1004 Wide Water and Winding Creek Elementary School redistricting option that were adopted through motions made by Ms. Reinbold on February 24th be negated and reviewed through the same process, and afterwards that each board member publicly explain why they believe one plan to be more worthy of adoption than another. Submitted tonight is a petition with 542 signatures. The signers of this petition agree that the middle school redistricting blended A revised should be recalled for the following reasons. It was voted on with inadequate notice given to impacted families, not allowing them time for public comment. It doubles the bus rides of families from small apartment complexes in townhouse neighborhoods, thus increasing transportation costs. These middle students will travel over 5.5 miles to school when there are other middle schools less than 3.5 miles away. It was proposed by the school board members three days before the vote and was not reviewed by the redistricting committee, which included principals, parents, and school logistic professionals. It does not meet the school board's goals for redistricting, as well as the plan recommended by the redistricting committee, balances the census at Stafford Middle School...
Thank you so much for your comments. I appreciate it.
Good evening, school board and Dr. Benson. My name is Julie Craig. I live at 38 Chadwick Drive in the Griffiths-Wide Water District. I wasn't sure if I was going to talk to you tonight, but my drive to the school board office cemented my decision. It only made my concerns more apparent. As I mentioned, I live on Chadwick Drive. As I came out at 6:10, I looked ahead and saw the traffic, typical traffic, at the Route 95, Route 1 corridor area. So I decided to turn down Mine Road. As I turned down Mine Road on my way to the courthouse, it just made me feel that my children are not as valued as others in the county. Days before the vote, my community was targeted and thrown into blended A. As I mentioned, we live in APU 150. We are relieved now to know that our community is not traveling to the fifth furthest middle school from our home, yet I would like to ask why such a decision is still okay for many other smaller communities off of 610. Safety, feeder patterns, proximity from home, and parental input was clearly not considered for these families, many of them who need the support and the support system of the school board the most. I can't walk away from the issue because it's just plain wrong. The argument that it causes less disruption because the plan moves fewer students is upsetting. An entire community should be moving to their neighborhood middle school together. An entire commu-- I'm sorry. Instead, your decision has disrupted feeder patterns, negatively altered free and reduced rates across the county, placed children on buses for close to seven miles that are-- I'm sorry, that are seven miles from their home, and has raised the projected capacity of AG Wright Middle School to 93% in 2019. It is the school board's responsibility to act upon what is in the best interest of the whole county, not the special interest of a few. The same process needs to be followed in regards to all options. Please make public the pros and cons of the approved plan. George Washington, a former Stafford County resident, once said, "Few men have the virtue to withstand the highest bidder."
Mr. Grant, and then Sharon Foley, please.
Hi, my name is Davis Grant. I'm at 2351 Courthouse Road in Stafford, Virginia. And I have to admit, I followed this school redistricting at a little bit of arm's length because I wasn't aware of the process, I wasn't aware of what was really going on and the reason behind it. But as I followed it a little bit more and more, it seemed like that the school board, and I don't mean to get personal, but I'd just say as the board as a general, got baited into more of managing a social landscape than it did managing the efficiency of the district. So I looked at that, and I looked up what your responsibilities were as the board. And under that, and under the responsibilities and duties of the board, it addresses-- there's a couple paragraphs or line items that addresses the topic of redistricting. And it clearly states the efficiency, managing the efficiency of the district, doing so, making decisions to benefit the efficiency of the district. Nowhere does it talk about managing social expectations or community expectations in the line item of managing all of education. And so I just want to clear out, or clarify that I think that you got baited into something. And in the future, I would hope that you would look in the mirror and take a gut check and say, are we doing this for following our responsibilities and duties to our pupils and to our parents and making sure we're maximizing every budget dollar that you guys have to fight for from the board of supervisors to benefit and make sure that our kids get the best education? Or are we getting baited into managing the social expectations of various communities? I live in this district here over in Acquia. My son goes to SES. He will eventually go to Stafford Middle School. I went to this middle school here, and I remember when this was a library. I've seen the growth in Stafford County. I've seen the expansion of schools. This and how this was conducted was an embarrassment. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, school board. Dr. Benson. My name is Sharon Foley, and I live at 49 Fountain Drive in the Acquia District. I'm speaking regarding the issue of school programming and redistricting. As we all know, the Embry Mill community is currently under construction. Documents relating to the pallianting, financing, and sales of this development reveal that one approach for advertising these homes has been to include data regarding the schools surrounding Embry Mill. The limited offering memorandum of the Community Development Authority dated June 10, 2013 states four times that the schools surrounding Embry Mill rank above the average scores in the county's public schools. The document shows specific data comparing the test scores of the schools immediately surrounding Embry Mill to the rest of the county. It specifically calls out that overall our middle schools fare the best when compared to other northern Virginia communities, and goes on to highlight that Rodney Thompson's and HH Poole's scores exceed the county's average. Additionally, the EmbryMill.com website states Stafford School District is highly regarded in the DC metro area while the schools the Embry Mill community children will attend are ranked as some of the highest in the state. Winding Creek, Poole, and Colonial Forge are identified as "Embry Mill Public Schools." Although the school board is not responsible for the marketing plan of a commercial website or in a limited offering memorandum seeking financing from the Community Development Authority, I believe if any board member has an association with any entity involved with the development, financing, and sales of homes in Embry Mill, their adherence to the school board code of conduct adopted on January 13, 2015 must be examined. Any vote on redistricting or programming that impacts the schools identified in this document should be called into question as a conflict of interest. A board member who stands to financially gain from development and sales of properties in Embry Mill and the performance of those schools may be violating Item 9 in the Code of Conduct, which states, "I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or appearance of impropriety." In short, a school board member cannot serve both as agent of a land development company and as a school board representative, and should not be legislating on issues for which they have financial interest. They should recuse themselves from voting on issues for which they have vested interest. I believe in respect to the Embry Mill development, a conflict of interest may exist, which calls into question the impartiality of the redistricting vote on February 24th. Seven of the middle school redistricting plans involved Embry Mill homes. I respectfully request the school board launch an ethics review into this matter through an outside authority and report back to the public. If conflicts of interest do exist, then all redistricting votes must be reexamined to determine if this conflict unduly influenced an outcome. Thank you very much.
That's all I have that has signed up. If there's anyone else that would like to address the board, you can come forward at this time. Please sign the clipboard there either as you come or as you leave. Either one is fine. State your name and your address.
I live at 36 Morning Dove Drive. I am in the Acquia District. I am here to let you know that I am not new to this school board redistricting and/or a lot of you who are on this panel. Welcome, Dr. Benson. I hope you have fresh eyes on our county schools. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I promise I won't cry. In 2001, 2006, we came here as an active-duty military personnel. Our family came here. Alls my husband wanted to do was to be closer to his work. So from 2001 and 2006, you guys received federal aid from our family because my husband worked at the White House. Our daughters are now at Brookpoint High School. We've been through Stafford Elementary, Stafford Middle School, and Brookpoint High School. Overcrowding at schools is very impactful to my daughters and to any student. When we were at SES, we had art on the stage with no sink. We had music on a cart. Overcrowding at the middle school, when my daughter entered Stafford Middle School, there was fights. You wouldn't, you would not believe the overcrowding. They opened up Shirley Heim without redistricting. My daughters lost all their Spanish classes, their extended classes of math, and et cetera. It was unreal. At the point in time when they opened Heim, they started using Stafford Middle School as a place for storage. I can tell you, as a volunteer at that school and at many schools that my daughters have gone to, that was unacceptable. There was rooms filled with just basic storage. And another thing that happened was in June of that year, when they opened up Heim, they tried to put in a Head Start program in Stafford Middle School for young ladies who were pregnant, who could bring their children to school at the middle school. And there was rooms provided for that. That did not go through, thank God, because, you know, some people who are married and would like to have that benefit and, you know, be able to bring their children to school. I am appalled because this was, that judgment, that statement, was taking place in June. So there was no town hall meetings, there was no Saturday work sessions, there was none of that. And I really believe that you guys, you guys are not allowing--
Thank you so much for your comments.
You're welcome, Mrs. Kidby, but you know what? I don't have a Saturday work session. I really, really don't.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? If so, you can come forward.
This is incredible. You--
Thank you very much for your comments.
How many years have you been on the board?
Thank you very much for your comments.
How many years have you been on the board? You're like a rotating door.
Officer, could I get you to escort this lady out, please? If you could state your name, I appreciate it.
Teresa Thompson. I'm serving as president of SEA. I'd like to say good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have two things that I would like to address that are on your agenda for information later this evening. The first one is the recommendation from the calendar committee for the years 1617. I, among some parent volunteers, some other staff member participants, some administrative participants, were involved in that calendar committee, and you are being brought forward-- a calendar is being brought forward to you for the year 1617. And the committee would also like to ask that you take another look at the 1516 school calendar also, and SEA is asking that you do that. This past school year, at winter break, we had a full two weeks of winter break. Students had a nice, restful break from school. Your staff did, your administrators did, and your parents had an opportunity to take some extended time to be together as a family. Next year's school calendar has us in session on Monday, December 21st, and Tuesday, December 22nd, which is only two days in that week. The fear is that many people will use this as an opportunity to pull their students from school, and we will have high, not attendance rates, but we'll have absenteeism, high absenteeism, and that it will be, will not be very instructionally sound for our students. We are asking that you re-look at that. There is some calendars out there, there are some calendars out there from the calendar committee that takes into consideration that two-week and not bringing students in for those two days during that week. Also, we have noticed that in your schedule for this evening is a discussion regarding snow days and makeup of snow days. There are two options available, one taking advantage of the waiver, one not taking advantage of the waiver. There's been a huge discussion among staff and parents through social media regarding the lack of looking at adding time into the school day instead of some of the options that are presented. SEA would like to ask that you give us an opportunity to poll, and we can bring that information back to you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Come forward. Please state your name and be sure and sign the clipboard as you come or as you leave,
Hi, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Benson. I'd like to speak tonight on behalf of the SEA on another issue, and I find that I'm speaking tonight as the vice president of SEA, and I would like to speak about the upcoming budget and the budget priorities this coming year. It's kind of ironic that I'm speaking to you now about the budget when last time I spoke, only a couple weeks ago, it was about class size loads and how high they are. And I have not wavered at all about class sizes being too big in many, many of our classrooms as a teacher, but more importantly, as a parent. Class sizes are more divergent, and teachers are being asked to do and accomplish minor miracles at times with the numbers. Within the last two weeks, though, many on this board have discussed and proposed some solutions, and I applaud you for that, and plans to lower the class sizes. That's a great start. More citizens and teachers are also, right now, actively advocating for change also. So we're moving in the right direction. Some are discussing how many teachers can be hired to help stop the bleeding at this point, but SEA would ask you not to sacrifice pay increases in order to fix the overcrowded classrooms. Our classroom numbers are not going to be fixed in just one year. We need to reward teachers and employees for staying. We need experienced and professional educators in these times more than ever. We cannot afford to lose our newly trained or our seasoned veterans in a county that would fall even further behind in salary enhancements. Our students deserve more than overcrowded classrooms, and one of these things they do deserve are also great teachers and great school employees. Thank you very much.
Please remember to state your name and sign the clipboard.
Hey, Dana. Hi, guys. Thank you so much. I just want to tell you, thank you so much for serving. I know this is one of those jobs that are, you work yourself out and could be thankless, but I want to personally thank you for giving us all your time. I don't personally know most of you, but my name is Marvin Blair. Whew, why am I scared? Phew, okay. I'm a resident of 24 Club Drive, Stafford. I belong to the Acquia District. Well, I've never attended any of this. I know I have three minutes. I'm going to start it right now. I've never attended any of this because I felt like I really do believe the system that we have in this country. I believe in this county that we live in. I work in this county, and I love this county, and I tell everybody this is one of the best counties between Fairfax to Fredericksburg. Why? Because it's, there's a diverse education, diverse community, not education, diverse community, well-educated people. I don't see a lot of discrimination coming from a foreigner who became a citizen in 2009. Now, why am I speaking here? I'm speaking here because when I heard about the decision that was made by you guys, I respect it. I don't have to agree with it, but I do respect it. Now, why am I here? I want you to please, please, please consider the points that I'm going to mention, and I really do hope, for the sake of the children, our future generation, you really do point this, you really do take the time to consider this. Based on what I've heard, I haven't really thought of studying the proposals that was mentioned earlier regarding this redistricting. The community such as Sandingdale Meadows or Stafford Borough wasn't never really originally to be redistricted to Stafford Middle School, and yet that was the solution that we all come up with, you guys all came up with. It was originally going to HH Poole. Correct me if I'm wrong. I know you can't respond to me, but anyway. It is a very disruptive feeder patterns. Not only that, now, we have a bunch of these children who goes to Anmon Keor will now be going to Stafford Middle, and now we're going back to North Stafford. So let's pause for a second and consider these children. I live here, and I'm not even speaking for my children, okay? I'm speaking for these children because I don't know if any of those parents have the time, the luxury of time, to attend meetings like this, okay? They will go to different schools, will not have any continuity with their friendships, with their educations. So what are we, what are we telling these children? Because you live in the less sought-after community. Now, I'm a Realtor. The first thought that came to mind was, okay, then why they did not move Woodstream? Woodstream has a bigger population of homes. If your, if your goal is to-- If your, if your goal is to lessen the population of that school, I don't know the technical terms.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your comments.
It's okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jim Riota. I live at two seven zero Thorny Point Road, part of the Aquia District. And I came before the board during the process and said a word that hopefully you're all very familiar with, and that's one of fiduciary. And I believe that you all have that responsibility, or certainly should have that responsibility. In my current profession as a fiduciary, I have to do what's best for my client. Your client is us, the residents of Stafford, Virginia. And that would be all residents, not just residents from within a particular area. The, the decision that was made seems to be one that doesn't follow logic. When I came up here originally and said that we have these, these areas and we have particular schools, and that that area should be closely regarded with regards to mile. We shouldn't be busing kids further and further away. We should try and make the education equal for all of our students. There shouldn't be one particular school that everybody wants to send their children to. That represents a problem right there. This board has many, many problems ahead of itself, and a lot of those follow along budgetary lines. How can we go across the street to the, to the Board of Supervisors and ask for more money? Or ask the citizens to support you in more money if they don't have trust in what you're doing with the decision made on redistricting? There didn't seem to be any clear communication. I heard a lot of facts that were presented, but there was not clear facts that were given by the school board. So there, there seemed to be a large disconnect. And the committee that was, that was challenged with coming up with the ideas were not listened to. Or if they were listened to, they certainly didn't seem to get a lot of, a lot of support. To the best of my knowledge, nobody ever went to Dr. Benson and said, "Dr. Benson, what is your suggestion?" We know that there are schools that are in need of help. At Stafford Middle School, I'm glad that we now have more students. My son will get a good education because I will make sure of that. And not all parents have that ability to make sure that their parents are going to be able to be there. Do we also look at the, when we start talking about free and reduced lunch? The reason that they get that is because their parents don't make a lot of money, so we're there to help them. Well, how much of our funding at the school level is done by the PTA? So we need to take all those things into consideration when we're looking at the school redistricting policy and earning that respect from its citizens.
Does anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments portion of our meeting. That will take us to Board Committee Reports. Mr. McCosker.
No report.
Ms. Reimboldt?
No committee reports, Madam Chair.
Ms. Egan?
No reports, thank you.
Ms. Healy? Mr. Hirons?
No committee report.
Nor do I. Ms. Hazard, do you have a committee report tonight? Okay. That takes us to Board Member Comments. Mr. Hirons, please.
I'm going to defer this evening, reserve my comments for later.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Healy?
No comments, thank you.
All right, Ms. Egan?
Still trying to look for the information. I just have one announcement. Moncur Elementary School is holding their annual, or semi-annual, how do you?
Semi-annual.
Semi-annual clothing sale on March twenty first. Eleven, anybody out there? Eleven to, nobody's here from Moncur. It's on the website. Sorry, Emily. My phone died.
All right, Ms. Hazard?
I would just wanted to congratulate all the many people and things going on with our students academically and in our sports area. There is so much going on, even in the midst of all the snow, we seem to miss all that. Our students are doing some amazing things. I know the Destination Imagination was going on and so many other things this weekend. So congratulations to all those winners. And for Hartwood residents, I hope I will see you all on Thursday night at seven o'clock at Rocky Run for an education conversation. Thanks.
Ms. Reimboldt?
Thank you. On February twenty fifth, I attended the duct tape fundraiser at Moncur Elementary, which was covered on the front page of the Freelance Star. I'd like to thank Jack Cavalier, Board of Supervisors Representative for the Griffiths Wide Border District, and Paul Milde, Board of Supervisors Representative for the Aquia District, for taking the time to attend as well. This was another successful event sponsored by Moncur Elementary School's PTO, and I want to thank all the parent volunteers at Moncur who worked hard to make this such a fun event for the children. Also, thank you to Mr. Mackey and Mrs. Norton for being such good sports. On another note, I voted for blended option A revise for redistricting because it combined the two options under consideration by the school board, and because it met the goals of the school board for redistricting. It significantly increased enrollment at Stafford Middle School, a concern expressed to the school board throughout the redistricting by Stafford Middle School parents, and reduced enrollment levels at Rodney Thompson, HH Pool, and Shirley Heim Middle Schools. I support the decision of the school board, and I am confident that all the redistricted students will be welcomed at their new schools. Regarding parity, I've repeatedly spoken about the need for parity at all our schools, and I believe my fellow board members want parity as well. With Dr. Benson as our superintendent, and with the program review underway and soon to be presented to the school board, I am confident the change will be coming. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Ms. McCosker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for being late. In my twenty-four years in the military, I've had many, many moves. Moves to nice places and moves to bad places, or nice places, and then moves to not so nice places. But I'm making a move about a mile away from my house. And if you've ever had, if you've ever had about eight or nine movers descend on your house and your wife, so I left the house, my wife was screaming at me on the way out. So I apologize for being late. It's just, it's just a mess. The one, one thing I'd like to put, point out is the, the SEA, the Staff and Education Association will be holding a, and it's probably well advertised, I'd Ferry Farm Elementary School tomorrow from four thirty to five. And they're going to be talking a little bit about the state of the schools and giving some good information to the parents and folks there. So I know Mr. Thomas and myself will be there, and we really appreciate the Stafford Education Association for, for having that little brief discussion with the parents. Thanks. I'll save my comments on the topics when the topics come up. Thanks.
Very briefly, I will be addressing the Homeowners Association's Park Ridge on the sixteenth at the Porter Library, and Hampton Oaks Homeowners Association on the eighteenth at Hampton Oaks Elementary School with Q and A and a brief presentation. I also wanted the public to be aware that the school board will be presenting its budget to the Board of Supervisors on the seventeenth. We're not quite sure of the time yet. We're still negotiating that, but it will be presented on the seventeenth. Superintendent, do you have some comments for us this evening?
I do, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask the board to consider scheduling a work session on the front end of our next board meeting. We plan on bringing the Resource Utilization Study to the board as a formal report, and we will have the President of the Company here if, if the board agrees to do that presentation. I, I'm really excited. I've had an opportunity to look at some of the draft material. It is very, very detailed. It will address, I, I think, over time, a number of concerns that we have heard from, from folks in the last, the last few months. There's a lot of information in the report, a lot of recommendations, a lot of commendations for things that we're doing, for doing well. But it's going to take us a little while to work through everything that is, that is in the report. There was a lot of research that was done, not only in looking at survey information across fifty other school divisions where this type of analysis has been formed, but also in our nine comparison school divisions that I think the board will find very, very helpful moving forward. It is a lengthy report in excess of three hundred and fifty pages, yes. So we want to do our due diligence and, and beginning to review that information. So I respectfully ask that the board consider a work session, if possible, prior to our next board meeting, such that we can get that scheduled.
Dr. Benson, will we be able to have the report before, if it's three hundred pages? Will we have any ability to see it beforehand?
I'm not sure yet. We're, we're, we're still trying to go through the drafts and, and make sure that the factual pieces are, are absolutely correct. We're, we're not certainly trying to influence recommendations that are included in the, in the report. But it is, it is lengthy. They collected a lot of information in a relatively short period of time. There will be an executive summary, which I suspect will be the, the basis of the, the presentation, and then time for the board to, to really kind of delve into the, the report. It's important that the board receive this information, though, this month, from my perspective, because one of the things that I indicated to the board early on that we would begin to bring some program review information to the board this month. And there, there are considerations and analysis that are included in the Resource Utilization Study that are pertinent to that work. We also are planning to have the first stage of some recommendations for the board to consider specifically about our middle school programs at that same meeting during the regular part of the meeting.
Dr. Benson, about how much time do you think we're going to need for that meeting? Is that, is that something we could do, a work session in an hour? Do we need two hours for that work session? What is your thoughts on that?
I would appreciate an hour if, if it would be possible for all board members to, to be here. I, I think it's important that the President of the Company be here in order to, to present. She certainly has, I think, the deepest understanding of pretty much every aspect of how they went about the analysis and, and where they see us doing well, and then other areas that they see that we, we have some challenges and that we should be considering change in operations.
Does anyone have any conflicts with a six P M. work session on the twenty fourth?
One question. We might want to start at five forty-five to give us a little break before the meeting starts.
I was going to suggest five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yeah. Can everyone make it a five thirty?
That's a challenge.
Can you make, okay. Okay, let's plan on five thirty on the twenty fourth then. All righty. Anything else, Dr. Benson?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. That takes us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve nine point oh one.
Okay, it's been moved. It's been second. Is there any discussion on consent? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to our one agenda item that's listed, ten point oh one. Approved fiscal year twenty sixteen, school board budget. Do I have a motion, please? Let's go ahead and move, let's go ahead and move, and then we can discuss.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded.
Madam Chairman, can we make clear that what we're approving is what was discussed at the work session?
Absolutely.
Which will be presented.
Well, and, and if you could present that so that the public could see it as well, we would appreciate it.
I apologize. My computer here does it to me every time.
Don't worry, I feel your pain.
Is this another one?
Is there another copy?
Someone short one?
Yeah.
I'm just passing, I'm just passing it down. I didn't have, I did not have.
Okay, what we've attempted to do is pass around the full page of what I'm attempting to, to make available to you electronically. Just trying to get it appear on the whole screen. All right, we'll try to do the best we can under the circumstances here. Basically, what we discussed at the budget work session was the fact that at the last meeting, you had requested that we come in under four million dollars as a request from the county, and that we insert some funding for additional FTEs in order to attempt to reduce class sizes and to address the FTE, additional FTE request of special education in order to meet the requirements for this upcoming school year. What we did, and based on Ms. Healy's suggestion, we broke out the growth and special ed, special ed compliance amounts that we had totaling eight hundred nineteen thousand into two lines. And then we reflected the two FTEs, additional FTEs at sixty-three thousand each under the final, the, the third column, which made that number six hundred twenty-six thousand. And the class size reduction, additional FTEs, which were eight teachers and one paraprofessional physician, totals five hundred and twenty-two thousand. On top of what we had started out with, which was at the last budget work session, we were at three point seven million. And we were able to do that with some additional state monies, and we also had some savings from legal expenses, which are about forty thousand. We also had some reduction in some contractual costs, janitorial and some other, combined about a hundred and ten thousand. And that was able to, that, that allowed us to be increasing the request from the county, but keeping it under four million. We arrived at three million nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Maintaining the professional development, the technology cyclic replacements, the O and M infrastructure projects, the bus replacements, the new financial system, plus the median teacher pay scale enhancement, as well as the one percent COLA and the one percent VRS salary increase, and also reflected the reduction in the employer cost of the health insurance plans.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wolf? I do. I noticed on this sheet, it shows state funds at one million four oh seven three seventy-two, and state funds up there at one five one three one seven eight. I couldn't reconcile the other two. I can't see where the net is. Is, is there something that's affecting that that I'm not seeing? Because here, you had the federal funds as a, a reduction to revenue of ninety-eight thousand, and there you have federal funds as an increase to revenue of two oh four. So, or is it the other way around?
We may have a, a bit of a, a flip between those two categories in a number.
Something in there that's netting out.
We, I, I will, we will fix that. That is a housekeeping matter.
I think everything is footing all right, to use.
I think those two numbers look like they're, you know, the, need to be grossed up a little bit.
The fifty-one, one three, one seven eight, and the two oh four, and then the.
It, it could be that my calculation on the spreadsheet is inaccurate either, and it, and maybe it should be netted down to smaller numbers. But we will look at that again, and we will make sure that we have the right numbers.
I just want to make sure that we're representing that right because if the state funding coming in from basic aid is fifteen rather than. coming in from basic aid is fifteen rather than fourteen, one point five million rather than the one point four million, I think that's something we need to know and reconcile.
Yeah, I was, I had calculated those state numbers and reconciled it like to the penny. So...
On this sheet, you did it.
I made sure that this sheet reflected what, so, we may have keyed something in such that the line is rolling into the wrong category, or it may be that we had a calculation that was including something in state that should have been included in federal, but we will get to the bottom of that.
But, the approved two sixty-three, eight eight, two, two sixty-two.
Two sixty-two is correct, right?
You feel that that's a correct number?
Yes, in total, you can see that the line for county local funds, three million nine ninety-eight is there, the state tax receipts for a million seventy-five thousand is there, the carryforward money of a million one fifty is there.
Right.
The other local funds are reflected. The contingencies and transfers amount is there. We have just a little bit of a swing netting down the numbers versus grossing up the numbers, and we can get to the bottom of that before the resolution is signed.
Okay, all right, terrific. Thank you so much.
I apologize. I didn't realize that we were off in that category. That's a good catch, Ms. Kidby.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Wolf at this point?
Well, I'm a little bit confused, because I missed a lot of this, and I'm sorry if I'm making anybody repeat themselves. It was really tough being away during this whole process. So, there's three different options up here, and there's one motion on the table, so...
Third column.
The third column.
We were asked, staff was asked, to go back and start with the last ending point, which was three point seven million dollars, the number at the bottom of the second column.
Okay.
And, to try to come up with some additional savings, and make whatever changes that were possible in order to add additional FTEs to address a request for two additional special education positions, teachers.
Right.
And, however many additional teachers in regular instruction that we could fund, depending on how much we're able to find as additional savings.
So, don't those special education positions also get funded by state and federal funds? Or, are we paying for that whole thing? If it's a requirement, wouldn't we get help from the state?
Some of it, some of it is funded by the state through their formulas, but nothing is funded by the state at a hundred percent.
Okay.
There is, there is nothing up here when it comes to the monies that the state will allocate for positions that relates to a one-for-one. They give us, you know, some percentage on the dollar, and a lot of that depends on your, you know, the local composite index.
Madam Chair, to help clarify what we're looking at here, this is actually, kind of reflects the timeline of the budget cycle as well. The first column and numbers, which is titled the Superintendent's Recommended Budget, or Suprec Bud, that was the original recommendation put together by Dr. Benson and presented in early January, I believe, or late December, early January.
Late January.
The second column, column C, is the Fab, the Finance and Budget Committee recommendations. So, after the superintendent presented it to us, we took it to the, you guys assigned it to the Finance and Budget Committee, and we discussed it in there and made some recommendations out of there. All through this process, the numbers, in particular, the state revenue, the sales tax, some of the healthcare, has all been refined through the process as we've gotten more detail on what the state was going to do, working with the healthcare providers on what our actual cost for healthcare is going to be. And then, column D is what we are recommending for approval at this point.
And I'd like to piggyback on those comments. Thanks so much, Mr. Hirons, for bringing that up. You can see some of those adjustments as we move from the first column Superintendent's Recommended Funding Request to the final column, which is what we have as an agenda item to be approved, particularly if you look at the health insurance, if you look at the VRS requirements, some of those requirements, if you look at the way the funding is coming from state sales tax, also the funding from the basic aid and other states, those numbers are changing, again, based on refinement, based on more information. As we go through the budget process every single year, we are always playing a little catch-up before we finally approve a budget, because the numbers are frequently changing at the state level, and we don't have solid firm numbers until we get a little bit further into the process, certainly not in January or December, when the superintendent's funding request came forward. Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, can I add just one more piece of clarity? Line, I think, six across, the title of that line is one percent COLA goal slash one point five percent COLA. Originally, I believe Superintendent's Recommended Budget included a one percent COLA across the board for all school employees. Through the process, we've been able to increase that to one point five percent COLA, and that's heavily based on the, the General Assembly has passed, and I don't know if it's been signed by the governor, but I think they're pretty much in agreement for a one and a half percent COLA for state employees. And, we actually received a little bit of revenue from that because of our SOQ leveling in instruction. So, we are able to provide or recommend to our funding body a one point five percent COLA across the board for all school employees. That's in addition to the, the, the scale enhancement for our teacher pay scales.
I do have one more question. The eight additional FTEs that we've added to this, are those earmarked for any particular school? Do we know where they're going? Was there a...
No, that will be subject to, based on what happens in reality with the redistricting and how the enrollment at each of the schools starts out in the summer, prior to the beginning of the school year. Dr. Benson and his team will be, Ms. Cale, will be looking at which schools may need the additional positions.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the budget.
We already have a motion on the table.
Okay, I'd like to read a quick little snippet.
You want to read the resolution?
I do.
Please do, that's a great idea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the Stafford County School Board has a responsibility to provide quality educational programs and services for the county's school-aged children in their regular day school instructional program and in an accredited summer school program. Whereas the instructional program extends to the literacy and interests needs of adults, whereas the population growth in Stafford County has created additional demands for personnel, operating costs, classroom space, and equal classroom facilities. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board on March tenth, two thousand and fifteen requests, number one, a full non-categorical appropriation of two hundred and sixty-three million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars from the Stafford County Board of Supervisors for the FY twenty sixteen school operating budget. And, number two, that all school operating funds expended on June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen be carried forward to the fiscal year twenty sixteen. And, number three, has a following school funds will be appropriated by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors in the following amounts, and it goes to describe the debt service on bonds, the health services fund, the school construction fund, the grants fund, nutritional services fund, fleet services fund, and workers' compensation fund. And, this is to be signed by the chair when adopted.
Okay. Having that motion, and a second, is there any further discussion on the budget? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Well, I think it's appropriate for us to address this budget. This budget really does do some good things and make some changes, I think, in Stafford County public schools. That's for the betterment of the parents, the taxpayers, and the students. The process we use this year is the process we've used in the past, but I think we really stuck to our guns in setting our priorities and working a budget with Dr. Benson's guidance to meet those priorities. And, one of the priorities that we, you know, that we really put out there was to begin alignment and adjustment of our compensation benefits with adopted comparison school divisions. One of the biggest things that we do in this budget, and we're going to talk about it in our next agenda item as well, is this median teacher pay scale enhancement. So, we're taking a look at all of our comparison counties, and we're going to be competitive with our comparison counties for our teacher pay. I think that's a major accomplishment in this budget, and I hope that the Board of Supervisors sees the benefit in what we are trying to do here as well, and sees the risk in not fully funding our request. It's going to move this county, this school system, in a somewhat different and better direction, in my opinion. And, everything that we're doing, we're adding professional development dollars, dollars that our staff has done without for years. I think that's a great thing to be able to reimburse some requirements that they have as part of their license for professional development. We do a number of other good things that, again, I think will benefit this county and this county school system significantly.
Thank you, Mr. Hirons, and I think a lot of this, we've been able to put together a budget that addresses some of these areas, even though we're still in a very tight funding environment, and that's because we've had some very creative senior-level staff and administrative staff at school level looking at every possible way to be able to stretch those dollars, and we really, really appreciate that. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes. That takes us to eleven point oh one. This is an information item. Approval adoption of the new compensation model for Stafford County public school employees. And, I would like, who brought this forward?
Mr. Fitzgerald.
If you could explain the compensation model, if you have a visual, that would be great as well.
Well, I regret, I do not have a visual, because we're hoping that the model can be presented succinctly and in terms of brevity in order for it to be clearly understood, if explained. We know that it is on paper and can be looked rather intimidating, but quite frankly, it is relatively simple in many ways. So, on your agenda item, you have the text that is recommended in terms of how you would go about explaining the model, and I'd be happy to share the highlights of that particular statement.
Please do.
We're calling it the Salary Market Adjustment Model of Compensation, and it's also been referred to as the Median Enhancement Model. But, basically, you start out with a market analysis of nine comparable school division teacher salaries, because we're limiting this model to just teachers at this particular point in time. And, that analysis is recommended to be done, it is, in this particular model, it is required to be done annually. Then, you move to the next step in the process, and staff recommends, as a result of that analysis, rates of adjustment to the teacher's salary scale based on that market analysis, and, this is important, the school board's target objective. So, if you're looking at the top of the first quartile, or the median of the four quartiles, or you could be looking at the top of the fourth quartile, that is a decision based upon that analysis that the board can judge to be their objective. And then, third, the school board will review and determine an annual cost of living allowance for all employees, and we think it's critical to underscore all employees on the cost of living allowance. Now, going into how the budget is prepared, I can tell you that in some strategies, you start with a COLA, and then you look to how that calculates into the market adjustment. And, that's probably the case, because we want to get an overall, and Lance, we could probably speak to that calculation method. But, we have to have the COLA overlaying the entire compensation, and then we do the market analysis for teachers to see how those would be adjusted to get at a final, final cost on the budget. What this does, this draws certain conclusions. Those three steps are basically the process in brief. But, there are certain conclusions that are drawn from that, and one of the conclusions is, is that the teacher's salary scale is advanced one-year credit on an annual basis. So, the first thing you do is advance the year's experience. Then, once the adjustment is applied, it applies to that particular year that it's been adjusted to, that additional year. So, the corresponding base salary for each year of experience is then adjusted to meet the COLA and market adjustment as determined in the final approved budget. This restores the year's credit, the year's experience credit model that has been pretty much historical kind of status for teachers for many years, and it has been a point of contention in past years where we were having to freeze that particular dollar amount for any new hires. So, now we're adjusting back to a year, year's service, year's credit model. Non-teachers, in the meantime, on all other salary scales are adjusted only in this particular model to a COLA as determined by the final approved budget. And, again, it only applies, the market adjustment only applies to the teachers. And, this, and it's important here, too, we're now replacing with this model the previous step model. The step model is set aside, I don't think it's dead and gone, because it's always something in the past that we could refer to historically, but it is not intended to be a part of this particular model. And, again, I know that relatively brief, but we wanted an oral kind of presentation for us to be able to adopt and be able to refer to and explanations as our constituents and customers come forward for explanation.
I appreciate that, since the model itself conceptionally is presented in this format, it makes us be aware that the model itself has a concept, rather than just seeing numbers placed within the model. So, we appreciate the write-up that you did. Are there any questions, comments?
I think it's a great model. I guess I'm concerned about how this is going to be presented at job fairs and things. If teachers are out there, potential teachers are out there doing their homework, you know, going to Spotsylvania, coming to Stafford, going to Prince William, how is this being introduced to them during our job fairs where it's, we look better than North and South?
Well, when we go to job fairs, we can't produce typically, because our job fairs and our recruitment activities take place prior to the final approved budget for the subsequent fiscal year. So, we present the current budget, and as we're presenting right now, of course, you know, it'd be great if we had these dollar amounts to work with in our recruitment. But, what we're presenting right now is really only a proposed model, and we make sure they understand proposed, and that it is subject to final adoption by the board. And, so, what we would be showing literally is not those buried three years that have been kind of unable to be seen in previous. These would actually show zero experiences, a certain dollar amount, one, two, three, by the year. So, this gives us a bit of an advantage in our recruitment. As a proposed, and it's very important to underscore proposed, because only until it's adopted can it be actually referred to as a finished product for our new hires.
Madam Chair, in that same vein, Ms. Egan and I were thinking, I know, somewhat along the same lines, you know, we talk about our county having an innovative learning organization, and I think we really expect that from our teachers, and I would like to thank the Compensation Task Force and Dr. Benson specifically to bringing something that's an innovative model into our schools, because we certainly expect our teachers every day to be innovative. I think we at the administration and policy level need to be innovative, and this is a great step in that direction. We need to start to remedy our fifty-five percent turnover for our zero-to-five teachers, the losses over the summer of two hundred and fifty teachers. We can't continue like that. Also, I think it puts a lot of stability for somebody coming in of knowing years of service. Please correct me if I'm wrong, the new contracts, if this is adopted, would state years of service in their contract.
Yes, ma'am. That would be additional modification to our current process, inasmuch as that we would now count the number of years of experience an individual had earned by virtue of their placement on the salary scale. And that would be written on the contract.
And in that regard, I would ask my fellow board members to consider whether tonight we need to move this to action. It is an integral part of our budget going forward across the street. It also sends the message, a little bit stronger to our new recruits, that this is something this board does support. And to me, it also says to our Board of Supervisors, this is a model, we are committed to making sure that our teachers come and they stay in Stafford County. And I would ask that we move this from information to action this evening.
Is that a motion?
That would be, that would be a motion to move 11.01 from information to action.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hirons.
Moved and seconded. Are there any other questions for Mr. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Fitzgerald, how does this affect current employees? Right now, we're basically minus three with experience. So, if we hired a teacher with three years' experience, he or she would come in at the step zero.
With three years of experience.
Aren't we three years behind?
Right, we're three steps behind. But when we modify that scale as a result of our comparison to the nine other school districts, remember, that adjustment is going to be made at each lane. So, zero will be a modified adjustment, one will get a modified adjustment, and so forth, all the way up to wherever the median is, that's the proposal for this year, wherever the median is, which is about 15 right now. And that will be a smaller amount as you go from zero all the way up. So, we will be able to assign a number of years' experience from zero all the way up through 30, as we get, depending upon that person's experience, whenever we hire them. There will have to be some adjustments to our current staff. So, we've gone about already the business of recounting their years since they've come in.
So, that means that our current employees will, who have been with us during the course of all the negative, or no plus years, I'll say, they will be plus three next year?
Basically, plus two, plus one, depending upon when they were hired.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McCloskey with the Mr. Hirons.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hirons. Listen, this is a good step forward. We've spent hours, you know, 20, 30, 40 hours just on the model alone in session, and probably the same amount in budget, and rightfully so. They're both very important. I think, I'm very, very happy with so far tonight, with the boards moving forward with the budget, as we approved already. We finally are getting to a place where we're not only looking down for a strategic vision of, you know, we stayed focused on, last year, we stated that pay scale, taking care of the salary disparity for our teachers was top priority. And then we went ahead with a budget that proved that we want to stay on track with that. Now, we come up with the median salary scale. It's an assumption-based model, it's analysis, it's metricized. So, we can go forth and say, this is why we're doing what we're doing to our funding body. And I just, I'm 100% behind this model. I know there may be some tweaks that we'll make, but if this goes to a vote, I'm going to vote, I'm going to go vote yes for it, because it's just one more thing that I think this board has been, is doing very, very well, to try to tell our story to not only the community, to the Board of Supervisors, our funding body, but to take, and taking care of our kids. You know, the teachers are the ones that touch our kids. They're the ones with, they're the tip of the spear. They're the ones that have, you know, I have four children in the school system, and Scott has three, and we all have a couple of kids in the school system. Miss Kidby had them a while ago, last year, I think, but, so, you know, so this is the right thing, this is the right move. And, you know, we're going to go forward with a strategic document that's going to go ahead and say, you know, we're going to, we can't forget about our service employees either. I mean, it's teacher, 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 because that's what we, that's where we funneled into this year and next year. But we have to consider our service employees, and Dr. Benson's already brought that up about, you know, how are we going to start doing their, are we going to look at the step or look at a salary or whatever, what have it, what have you. So, I just wanted to say that, I didn't want to go on and on about the budget, but it's good stuff.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear to the public and to our teachers that are here and watching what we're voting on, actually, right now, to move it to action, but what I expect the next motion to be of, this is adopting, saying that this school board wants to adopt the new model. We don't have the actual scales, what their, you know, the pay rates are actually going to be right now, because it's a plugin. Once we have the model, then we start plugging in the data. And in our budget that we just passed, we request $2.2 million to be injected into the model to get us to that 15-year point, roughly 15, I think, where years of service at 15 years for our teachers hit the median of the market. So, we are not actually adopting any pay scales right now, any steps, et cetera. We're adopting a brand-new model, data model, on how we're going to go forward with our pay scales for, again, for our teachers. And Dwayne is exactly right, that this is our largest employee group, we want to take care of them, but the, all the other employees of Stafford County Public Schools are not forgotten, to include our nurses, our janitors, our custodians, our mechanics, et cetera, bus drivers. And I think it's the intention of this board, going forward in years, to look at all of those pay models and scales as well and make improvements there. And Dr. Benson's really going to take care of this.
Like I said, we are indeed, at present, the Compensation Task Force remains at work, just in particular with those other areas among our workforce, and reviewing some models that are present for them as well. So, this is an ongoing process for the entire workforce.
As we adopt this model, one thing that comes to my mind is there will be an annual analysis in order to determine what numbers will feed into the model on an annual basis.
That's correct.
And I'm sure as we go forward with this model, we'll find the right time to do that analysis. We'll also be able, in a very timely manner, to be able to get that analysis as part of our budget and out to the, to the folks that are affected by that annual adjustment. It's a little bit of a paradigm shift, when you think about what we've usually had with a step that's very predictable. This will be a less predictable model, but it will be a very good measure of what's going on in the market and so extremely competitive. I really appreciate the Compensation Task Force going forward with this, all the work that was put into it. I think it's, as the rest of the board members have stated, an excellent step in the right direction. We have a motion to take it to action unless there's any other questions. All those in favor of taking this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion for approval then?
I have a motion to.
Motion to approve adoption of the new compensation model for Stafford County public school teachers, it should be teachers, that accurately reflects years of service.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roberta, you can decide who seconded it.
I think, I think Ms. Egan beat me out on that one.
Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, good job. That takes us to approve the summer school program proposed for 2015. This was brought forward by Dr. Quinn. Are there any questions for Dr. Quinn concerning this item?
I have a couple of questions.
Dr. Quinn, if you could come forward, please.
Hi. Hello. I went through the list that you had in the agenda item, and some of these I didn't even know we had, so, thank you.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions, though. Are these programs that we're doing here in the summer, were they included in this program evaluation that we're doing, kind of across the board?
Specifically, which ones, Ms. Egan?
Any of them. The, there's a math bridge program, there's a STEM camp, there's driver's ed, there's, what's this, one of my little things in the way?
Those are paid separately.
Jump Start, CGS, something or other, project graduation academies, extended school year program for students with disabilities, I can see that, Behind the Wheel Summer Drive, those are all listed as summer. Lots of them also, and I'll go ahead and let you answer that first.
Yes, I can't speak specifically to whether the program review addressed all of those. Those are summer programs that are driven by student need. And also, they're fee-based, so they're cost-neutral in that sense, in terms of our elementary K-5 and 6-8 programs. We do, we track data and progress monitor the effectiveness of the children who participate in those programs, whether or not that made it under the microscope of the program review, I'm not sure.
Okay. Why are we not considering an increase in any of the fees for non-resident students? Why are we picking up that, why are we not adjusting it for the people who aren't living in here, in Stafford County?
Well, we basically found that the fee that we've been carrying, I think it's been two or three years, so, we've been doing okay with the, with the fee for the non-residents, so.
They pay equal to what the Stafford County taxpayers are paying?
No, no, ma'am. They're paying out-of-district tuition, see where that is located.
Okay, you don't have to look it up, because I just, I just wanted to know that the outside non-residents weren't paying the same amount that we were paying as taxpayers.
Yes, ma'am, they're paying about $100 or more.
Okay, okay.
The CGS, just, you might get confused because it says $20 flat fee, and the CGS would comprise of, you know, five counties, King George, so, those kids are not just ours, they're.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. All right, that's, I think that's all I had. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say very quickly that, you know, my children take, my two oldest take advantage of the summer programs every year, and they're, and they're fabulous. And many times, the same teachers that they walk by in the hallway in class, even though there are kids from Spotsylvania or King George, you know, there are teachers from Stafford County teaching these classes in the summer. And they're just fabulous programs for a very little amount of money. So, I mean, I'm really behind the summer school programs.
I had to follow on, Ms. Egan, you and I must be tracking tonight, because I, too, was kind of focused on the non-resident. There is priority to Stafford County residents first.
Absolutely, yes.
And I tried to find it, but there is, Stafford County residents have priority in seeking these classes first.
Correct, and I did want to. Except for the, except for the governor's school programs, which comprise of five counties. So, there are five counties or four counties worth of kids competing for the seats.
If I may, to go back to Ms. Egan's question, over on page three, we have an out-of-county fee of 400, whereas our in-county students pay 350 for the high school courses.
Okay, good, thanks.
I had just a couple of questions. There was made mention of the Jump Start classes for the rising ninth graders. Can you give me an example of what one of those classes might be?
In terms of, well, it's like an orientation kind of program that each of the high schools hold or schedule before the start of school.
Oh, so it isn't an academic course?
It's more of an orientation, in terms of study skills and those kinds of things.
Okay, okay. The other one, there were, there are virtual classes that were available at the high school. Now, are these virtual classes, are there any of them that the students can do from their home, or do they need to go to the bricks and mortar and do them?
Well, we do sort of, as a brick and mortar, and it's blended in the sense that they come for an orientation, they do all the coursework at home, and then they come in for assessments at the midpoint and at the summative point.
Okay. Also, the math bridge program, I know historically, that bridge program for students going to, into extended seventh and then the algebra one as well, has only been offered at one middle school. Is that a problem for the people across the county that want to participate in that?
We haven't found it to be a problem. You know, at Thompson Middle School, you know, that's generally the location in terms of, it's set up administratively so that we, you know, pay a supplemental fee for the extra administrative oversight and that kind of thing. So, it seems to work really well there.
I know when, I, just one second, I know when my children took it, it was at Drew Middle School, which was a little bit more centrally located, but I was just wondering whether or not that would be problematic.
I was going to give you some anecdotal information on that. Being from southern part of the county, we have a lot of kids from our neighborhood who take advantage of that program, including mine, who didn't achieve the marks necessary, but he'll pay back the tuition someday.
[laughing]
But we do have a lot of students from Drew Middle School, from Leland Station, from kids that attend Dixon Smith as well, that take advantage of that.
It's a great program.
And I haven't heard from any parents of concern of travel, in a, in a sense that I'm not doing it because of the distance of travel.
Because of the travel, okay.
A lot of folks have carpool and such.
Okay, all right.
Christopher will be paying me back someday.
Madam Chair, also, many times, the choice of the schools over the summer is also dictated, I'm sure Mr. Haran can correct me, there are projects that go on over the summer at many of the schools that we don't, because I know, I think it was last summer, you would not have been caught in AG Wright Middle School, because I think they were taking the roof, either the roof off or putting in the heating. So, sometimes those decisions are dictated by construction projects as well.
Any other questions concerning this agenda?
Well, let's just hope that the, Mr. Haran doesn't have the kids moving the furniture over from Stafford High School into the new building. If I see him in the summer, I'm going to come after him.
There you go.
Ms. Healy?
Is there not a program whereby students who can't afford to pay these tuitions can take the courses without paying tuition?
We do make some accommodations.
Enrichment classes particularly, so there is, all right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Healy. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Quinn. The next item, 11.03, approve the calendar committee's recommended school calendar for the 2016-2017 school year. Mr. Fitzgerald, are there any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald about this item?
I have a, go ahead, you go first.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Every year, when the calendar comes up, there's two things that, kind of like a hotspot with me and a lot of my constituents. One, of course, and you've heard me say this as a 24-year veteran, Army retiree, you know, Veterans Day. But I'm always, I'm always pleased when I go in at Veterans Day to see the kids and the teachers and the schools doing special things. So, I kind of talked me off the ledge on that years ago. But the one thing, Board, that I'd like to ask, that you kind of look at, is December, when we start on Thursday for our break. And so, what happens from where I see, you know, the truth as I see it, and walking around in my kids' classrooms, is the teachers kind of are working their tail off, trying to prep for the winter, you know, the Christmas break. They kind of get rid of the kids on Wednesday after a full day, and then they come back Thursday, the 22nd or 23rd, depending on when the calendar falls, on that Thursday, and, you know, they have two days to prep for basically, you know, Christmas. You know, many, many of our teachers celebrate Christmas, that holiday. And so, that always comes to me as, you know, is there something that, as a, that the board can do to maybe give them another day during that week of December, to at least kind of close up shop and still have time to go buy presents for their kids and loved ones? So, I guess that's my kind of question for the board slash whoever wants to take that one on. I see that the board doesn't want to take that on, so I'm going to go ahead and point to you. Is there, is there somewhere we can come up with the instructional time to, if the board wills, if the board, so.
Madam Chair, and Dwayne, can I ask a quick?
Yeah.
Kind of reset question? Because this is the first time that I've been on the board that we're going through approving the calendar. I'm not sure exactly of the process. Back before I started my service on the school board, I believe it was the December before I started, so, the last meeting before I started, or two meetings before I started, the board then approved 2013-14, 2014-15, if I have the years correct, two at a Two at a time, I think it was. And, you know, Dwayne, kind of, it's, the biggest question I get asked is about our calendar, Veterans Day and the winter break are the big things, and then the whole snow days issue, which we're going to get into in a few minutes. Can you kind of quickly go through the process of the committees? How they're developed, what they recommend? Because someone earlier said, I think it was SCA rep that referenced, there are other calendars out there that give other options. And where are these other calendars? I apologize.
Let me begin by basically showing you some backup information that we had prepared for tonight's meeting.
What are you looking to do? Go down and hit, go down and hit the slideshow, or go down and see the slide projector down all the way at the bottom, by sixty-nine percent. Go to the left. Oh, no, no, like right-left of it, right there, that little slide thing up there. Go to sixty-nine percent. And then, up, up.
Up, 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 up. I'm sorry, you know, you can do this right there.
Right there, hit that one.
Thank you. You know, I've only done, I've only done this for twenty-five years.
You were going your way.
We're going to start all over here, this is what I remembered.
All right, go ahead, do it your way.
Technology. Just briefly, this is our committee membership for the current calendar committee. And the calendar committee is really a matter of policy and regulation. We're obliged to maintain a calendar committee in force on an annual basis. And part of that is that we have representation across the various school divisions, magisterial districts, as well as staff, to help support our needs in terms of examining what the options are in any particular year's review. And then, I'm going to, now, let's see, we're going to drop this down real quick, and I'm going to bring up something else that I thought, well, this may be asked, so I wanted to prepare to have this. We have a set of standards that we bring to our calendar committee each year. And those standards have been developed over time. Sometimes they're reviewed. This year, we reviewed them once more, and I apologize for the small print. But basically, what we're doing is we're looking at a number of areas that we kind of say, we need to focus on these areas. And you can read through them, but number two, for example, talks about a commitment to our veteran community by aligning the school calendar with the federal observance of Veterans Day. So, we're aware of that, we're very conscious of that being one of the factors involved. We look down, and I believe there's a section there that talks about the winter break. Number four, the benefits of an extended winter vacation for teachers and staff. We know that that's a critical piece to the overall review of the calendar. We've also established over time that we want to have a day that's long enough so that we can acquire, we call it bank time, it's reserve time. And you'll see later on in the closure and makeup days presentation how valuable that can be as well. But it also gives us a requirement that is by the state of at least five and a half hours instruction. So, we carry on with significantly more instructional time to give us some of that. So, all these factors are brought into play. And then, finally, about three, four years ago, it was a part of the calendar committee's kind of position that we wanted to have at least two years in advance calendars approved by the Board. So, in December 2013, that's when we approved the 13-14, and I'm sorry, pardon me, the 14-15 and the 15-16. And that particular, at that particular meeting, we also considered the 16-17, but when we came back to the Board, it was decided at that time we would only focus on the 15-16. And so, for example, this year, we're coming to you not only for 15-16, because that's been approved, by the way, it's already been approved in December 13. However, this year, we're going to bring back now the 15-16, that's been approved. We're not going to go back over it unless you want to and want us to review it, and we're prepared if that were the case. But more importantly, to get two years in advance, we're going to present to you tonight, the 16-17. So, that was our objective, to have two years in advance. But while we met, it was just, we had the group together, let's also take a look at the, not just the 15-16, 16-17, but also, we looked at 17-18, to get a feel for where we're going to be. So, we try to stretch it out, we try to get a good look over the years of where we're going, and maintaining these standards as we go through. And with that, we have a pretty good model in place, we feel, for the superintendent, because this is a committee of the superintendent, for us to bring to him recommendations that we feel is in the best interest of the school division. Now, here's the one part that we have no control over. And that is, for example, Veterans Day doesn't always fall on a Friday or a Monday. It doesn't, and Christmas break, winter break, and the holidays don't seem to fall on a convenient day every year. For us to be able to say, well, we have to go to school two days, no, we can go to school three days and then have the break. It varies from year to year. This past year was exceptionally good for meeting the two-week request. The subsequent years, as you can see, for 15-16, 16-17, aren't going to be as compatible to a full two-week winter break. But we did look at it, and that was part of the committee's intent, was to try and see if we could get there, basically, based on the days that we're on the calendar to work with. So, I share that just as, in response to Mr. Haran's question, but also to give you an overview of the committee's challenge every year. We meet as often as necessary, and the first thing I tell the committee is that we're here kind of representing our various districts and areas of responsibility, but also, we're here representing the superintendent in terms of providing him with a good, solid recommendation for good, solid instruction for students. And that's our priority. We also let them know that we're not going to be able to meet everybody's wishes, because everybody does indeed have a variation in what their desires are, but we can certainly give it our best try. And this is a good example this year that's coming up for approval, where we just don't have a full two weeks toward winter break. We do study every year the option of Veterans Day. And again, this year, we had a lively, enthusiastic, energetic, exciting group, I think most engaging, that I've had the occasion to work with. And it was really funny, we started out talking about 15-16 because people wanted to look at that winter break. And, but at the same time, we said, well, what about Veterans Day? That's part of our charge. And ultimately, the emphasis came back, well, you know, let's focus on the classroom as an experience for the Veterans Day celebration and remain on that course, that was a judgment. But let's see if we can develop an extended winter break period. So, we did come up with a revision, but only if requested, because that is not part of our recommendation to address that tonight. But we are prepared if needed. So, we also tell them, and this is important, too, that we're not looking for a unanimous vote on this. This is really an opportunity for us to kind of draw consensus. And I will tell you that the consensus was overwhelming for the 16-17 calendar. And then, the, at the same time, there was a consensus to, you know, to look back at 15-16. However, again, that's been approved, and we're not wanting to revisit that necessarily without the Board's consideration for that being revisited. Does that help? I hope I've given you a fairly thorough background on the committee's mission and...
The only other thing is, are there any other versions of the calendar that come out of the committee as, well, this is the one we recommend, but here are some other things we worked on?
Yeah, we work on variations, particularly, the winter break is a key variation. The last day of school is typically a variation. We can't always, because, for example, in the revised consideration for an extended winter break for next year, it means extending the school year by two days. That would be one of the effects. So, that's another option that was put into play. Abbreviating the days, more early releases, depending upon the grades, is always a question that comes to bear. We have to worry about things like staff development and professional development days. Those are critical. And so, we can look, but bottom line is, we have to have nine-hundred-and-ninety hours, and we have to have one-hundred-and-eighty days. And they have to fit between Labor Day, the day after Labor Day, and then hopefully, not too much longer than the second or third week in June. So, we try to be as, you know, economical with that charge as we can. And so, with that, though, there are a number of options. And then, we draw consensus, that's how it works.
Ms. Egan had a question.
What did the committee use? Well, you've just given us some bullet points, I guess I'll go right to the question. Surveys are utilized a lot throughout some of the committee work. I remember we did it for the CIP Advisory Committee. Did the committee look at doing a kind of a county-wide survey to look at some of these individual days that we have off? To find out what is the general consensus?
We have in the past. We did not, we haven't done it for the last several years. We rely on that committee's judgment in as much as they're representatives, and that's how we, that's how we kind of view them. We find that the SCA, for example, will take on the challenge of surveys oftentimes. And we do try to get these calendars in advance to the teacher's advisory, for example. I believe they had a chance to look at it this year. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they had a chance to look at it. I know that it was provided in advance, so that opportunity would be available. Staff, we don't send it out in any kind of mass mail for people to give us a response. The SCA has, I think, in the past, as I recall. The only time we've done a survey, an official, formal survey, was years ago when we were looking at pre-Labor Day versus post-Labor Day. That was the last formal survey that I believe we've done, okay?
Madam Chair, just to close out my point that I made, and I got sidebarred by Mr. Haran's. So, you know, my motion, or not my motion, but my question would be, you know, what, how can we, do you think three days before Christmas Eve, you know, at least having three days off that week? If it falls, like, right now, it falls on a Saturday. And each calendar you have to look at, you know, each year, knowing that many of the teachers are going to work that other day. So, maybe this is something, maybe the SCA can kind of put their feelers out and see where the teachers, does that really matter to them? Or would they rather have the three, you know, because right now, we have, you know, we could have makeup time in June, we can just say thirteen, fourteen, fifteen is a full day instead of a half-day. Instead of an early release for all schools. You know, at two-point-five, five hours a day, roughly instructional time. So, I mean, I guess that's, you know, Veterans Day is always, just like you said, Veterans Day and three days at least before the holiday, you know, the Christmas break holiday, having off that week. I mean, that's kind of...
Remember, this item is up for information right now. I think Ms. Healy had a question.
I have a question about the committee. Did the committee not approve calendars for two years before this one came forth?
Yes, basically, we did the thirteen, I'm sorry, the fourteen, fifteen, and the fifteen, sixteen, and December 2013.
But, so this is the only calendar that was voted on by the committee?
Yes.
For approval?
Yes, because we already had the fifteen, sixteen in place, already approved. For next year, then we did the subsequent year.
Yes, I had heard that the committee had approved calendars that had Veterans Day as a holiday. And Mr. McCosker, I think there's always time to revisit any item. Just because we've done it in the past doesn't mean, you know, it has to be automatically approved. And I certainly would be open to discussing Veterans Day based on input that I've received from community members, you know, and staff as well. Not that I want to discourage the presentations and programs in the school, which I think still could take place, maybe not on Veterans Day, but perhaps about Veterans Day, before or after. But, you know, I had heard that the committee had discussed Veterans Day and had actually approved a calendar that included Veterans Day as a holiday, and then somehow, this other calendar came up, and then that was voted on. It's really not relevant, but I think it's important that, you know, that it was discussed, it is an item, and there's no reason why we can't consider it. I'd be concerned about ending the school year on the nineteenth for employees, because I think that's really late, you know, to have to come back, especially, you know, when they start in August. So, if there's any way we could even look at that, to have it be that weekend. Maybe it's not even an issue, I don't know. There's just things to think about with it. And I agree with you on the winter break as well. The world will be off the day before Christmas Eve, because that's going to be the holiday, because it comes on a Saturday. So, in effect, we're getting out one day before, you know, everybody else is, which doesn't give a lot of time. Well, but the holiday, well, it's going to be the, the holiday is going to be Monday, then? Okay, well, it's Monday, then, and then the next Tuesday. Yeah, but it's still, it's cutting it close if you want to travel. So, I'm certainly open to discussion. I know early outs have always been a sensitive area because of different needs and the reason that they're there. There's always been discussion of costs and savings, and the buses are out, so why not, you know, have it all day? And I do understand that for the Sheriff's Office to have their employees in our school on Veterans Day is a cost to the Sheriff's Department, because those employees would normally be, you know, off that day as all county employees, you know, have a holiday then. So, if anyone wants to discuss that, I certainly am open.
It seems to me that at one point, we did have Veterans Day. It went back and forth for a while.
Yes, and if, well, you'll remember, Ms. Phillips was always a champion of Veterans Day, as well as pre-Labor Day, but, you know, but it, yes, we've had Veterans Day some years, and some years we don't. So, it may be time to relook at it.
Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am. We've also, as has been discussed, yes, we had a period of time, it was a couple of years, where we did have Veterans Day as a holiday. And we have had a number of concerns that have been expressed about the fact that there are constituents who have concerns about the fact that we're not respecting the fact that this is a federal holiday, which is honoring our veterans, and not recognizing that by having school on that day. Although, I understand that we do a lot of educational programs, and I definitely think this is worth looking at, again, to see. And, I mean, I would like to request, can we have calendars brought back to us? Or have this research so that we can get some more information about possibly making Veterans Day a holiday again? And if so, what would we have to do in terms of adjusting the calendar in order to fit it in?
Let me take a quick straw poll of the Board to make sure that we have at least a semi-consensus on wanting to bring forth Veterans. Sounds like, Ms. Healy, am I reading you wrong? You wouldn't mind seeing a calendar?
Yes, I'd like to look at it, yes.
And certainly, Mr. McCosker, and Ms. Ryan-Bolt? Yes? Yes?
You know, I can never go yes or no. But the short answer is yes, but if it's not able to do it, it's something I'd like the calendar committee to start thinking about and considering, is a rotating holiday of what day is out. You know, we have all the other federal holidays, and this is, if I'm not mistaken, the only federal holiday, possibly Columbus Day also, that's not a day out of school. You know, can we look at rotating what holiday it is that we don't recognize, lack of better term? But yes, on Veterans Day, because I do think it's important. And this one is on a Friday, I understand why it's not.
So, that might be, if you could, when you bring, when this is brought forward for action, if we could have a calendar that would reflect that, and how that would look?
An alternative sixteen-17 with Veterans Day, very good.
What are we taking away from?
Well, can we do, we would have to take...
Look at fifteen, sixteen as well?
Yeah, you have to get the instructional hours.
We'll reconvene the calendar committee and see if they can help us with that.
How many banked hours do we have in this, thirty-seven?
I'm sorry, for this year?
How many banked hours in the 2016?
Right now, our minimum's thirty-seven for this year.
What about this calendar?
It'll be similar.
Similar?
It'll be similar, yeah. It's working out about that number on an average, yeah.
And each day is about five-point-five hours, is that correct?
Well, each day is a matter of about, closer, the full day is closer to six and a half, but the instructional day is about five hours and usually about forty-five, fifty minutes, in that general range. Because that, between five and a half and what we get extra is how we develop the thirty-seven hours for bank time.
So, the thirty, for example, this year, the thirty-seven hours are instructional hours that are built into the calendar.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just another request, Madam Chair, that we, you know, Veterans Day, yes. I would like some sort of discussion...
would, I would like some sort of discussion, and maybe that'll be offline about the Christmas break, and making sure we have enough days. But also, bringing this calendar, is it, so, might I understand that this is, we are going to start bringing a yearly calendar to the board?
In advance of one, one additional year. So right now, we've got fifteen, sixteen approved, we're bringing to you sixteen, seventeen tonight. That gives us two years. And in fifteen, sixteen, we're going to bring you seventeen, eighteen, to stay two years out on approvals. That's the goal.
That's what we've done typically. Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Fitzgerald to consider looking at those early releases in June. I know this year, we're using them to make up the hours, and I'd, I'd prefer not to take instructional time away before the end of the year. So if, in fact, you know, we could have those be full days, consider having them be full days, then if we had a exceptional year, and did not use all our bank time for inclement weather days, we could go back and adjust that to, to be an early releases, something to that effect. Because one concern that we, we have from the instructional staff is the, getting that instructional time in before the, the May exam testing periods. Thank you.
Now, is it, my understanding, those early release days, and those are exam days, aren't they, at the high school, middle school level?
Yes, yes. And that is, that is an issue.
Well, we're doing it this year, right? Isn't that, isn't that part of the makeup proposal?
Well, that's one of the proposals. Any other questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I just get a point of clarification? Are we also asking Mr. Fitzgerald to look at adding, would it be possible to add that additional day, for example, in the sixteen, seventeen calendar, as well as adding those days to the fifteen, sixteen calendar? As the SEA had requested?
That was not what we had discussed. Is there any interest on the part of the board to changing an already approved calendar? That's what the SEA was brought, brought up in their comments, that's what Ms. Ryan Bolt is, is figuring.
Yeah, obviously looking at it, and in both situations.
Is there any interest on, on part of the board?
Madam Chairman, I, I certainly think it's something that we can look at, although I don't think we need to do it in conjunction with this calendar.
Right.
It's something that we would need to do before the end of the school year, so that families could do their planning for, for next year and staff. But I don't think it's something that needs to come back to us, you know, next week. But perhaps if, if the board, you know, is willing to ask for that to come back to us at some point in April or, or May, so that, you know, we could have it for information, and then, you know, action if we want to take action on it.
That takes us...
Me as well.
Okay, that takes us to eleven point oh four. Have I got this right? Yes, eleven point oh four. This is also an information item. Approve the award of a construction delivery order to beyond, beyond sports surfaces for the amount of six hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars, using VPSA Bond Series 2014B for the repair of the track project at Brookpoint High School.
Madam Chair, I have, I have some questions regarding this.
Is this Mr. Haran?
Hi. Didn't we not terribly long ago do work on the track at Brookpoint? Well, and under the old surfaces, we traditionally do replace the, the surface every three years on most tracks, high school tracks. What we're doing with this particular track, and what we did at North Stafford, we started using a different track surface that would give us a ten-year warranty. You know, that is much, it's a monolithic pore versus the urethane rubber that we put on. So North Stafford was the first of the five that we planned to do, and this is the second.
Okay. And what, but when was the last time we did the track? With the other material?
We are doing repairs to the tracks all the time.
All the time, okay.
So a comprehensive repair was probably a few years back, but I know that we spot repaired Brookpoint, as well as Colonial Forge, in, in the not-so-distant past. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to get a clarification, because I knew some work had been done.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was thinking, well, if this is a major repair, and it's, hasn't been that long, why should we be paying for it? That was my whole point in asking the question, but obviously, if we're replacing them. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one. Do we have some information concerning the life of a polymer track as opposed to a latex track?
We do. And we went through the evaluation about three, three and a half years ago, prior to implementation at North Stafford. As I mentioned, there's a ten-year warranty on the monolithic, what we're putting in now. So we kind of did a cost-benefit analysis, and knowing that it's been a challenge, the ten years I've been here, working with the high schools, it's been a challenge to continue to keep up that urethane surface, you know, that we've previously used. We went and looked at some of the comparison school districts, not the nine, but some of the ones in the local area, as well as to the north of us, to see what they were using. And we found out that many of the high schools are going to this. And so that's when we started exploring, doing this type of surface, and, and we felt confident in it. We liked what we heard from our counterparts, and so we implemented it at North Stafford last year, or two years ago.
Two years ago. And I must say, the track at North Stafford High School is a very, very nice track. It's very nice for the students to run, and less injuries, having had students, and Ms. Healy had students, a student as well, that, that was a runner. It's much better for the kids, really is. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Haran?
I just have one question. We, we still can't hold meets at Stafford High School, can we, because of our six-lane track?
Well, I don't want to comment on that, because I don't know it. I know we have a six-lane track. I don't know, I think there can be meets held there, but there's some accommodations that have to be made.
Events that probably can't...
I know that there's not sanctioned, you know, certain track meets on there, and I think that's true. But I don't want to mislead you with any info.
Is Stafford High School the only high school to have six lanes?
It is, of the five high schools. Yes, sir.
So I would just, I'm just going to say, board, that I'm going to discuss with Mr. Hirons later on, after we hit the high priority items with money and budget, and about, you know, it's kind of thinking, trying to think up some creative ways to try to get an eight-lane track at Stafford High School, so that our folks can have meets there, and sanctioned meets.
Well, it is in the CIP.
It sure is.
It is.
It is, it is.
So it's there, and, you know, of course, expanding the track requires some additional work, to be able to make room for it with respect to the bleachers. So we have that captured in that particular project.
Or, you know, or we can maybe even do, if that field comes, if that funding for that, that new field comes up, maybe just put the track on that, might even be cheaper than moving the bleachers. I don't know. That's the kind of stuff I just wanted to discuss with you and Scott.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe this next item is yours as well, Mr. Haran, in case there's any questions. Approve an award of a construction contract for Waco Inc. in the amount of two million five hundred ninety-six thousand, using VPSA Bond Series 2014B for the repair of the mechanical systems at two schools, A.G. Wright Middle School and Garrisonville Elementary School. Are there questions for Mr. Haran concerning this particular item?
No, just a yay.
This one's been around for a while, and I'm glad it's finally our turn.
I know. I, I did have one question. You mentioned the two phases. No way they can get one of them done in one year, and then knock out the other one the next year? I mean...
And that's effectively what we're doing. We're doing part of the, you know, it's a combined school, obviously, we, we know that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're, we're doing one portion of that facility, and then the second summer, the second part.
Okay, all right, all right.
It's a very extensive project.
I'm sure. For that amount of money, it better be. Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, that takes us to eleven point oh six. Construction contract to Aiken Incorporated. This is for eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Again, VPSA Bond Series 2014B for the repair of interior finishes at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. Are there questions for Mr. Haran concerning this particular item? Well-needed. Been needed for quite some time, so appreciate this item coming to the top of the list for our construction. All right, that takes us to eleven point oh seven. Award of various furniture, equipment, supply, and installation delivery orders in an aggregate amount of six oh nine, one fifty-seven, and thirty-three cents, mind you, using VPSA 2014B for the rebuild of Stafford High School project. Questions for Mr. Haran concerning this particular item?
I, I really appreciate that extra money being put in there for the new furniture, because just this, what, weekend? My days are running together. I was approached about, hey, I can, I think they're moving all the old stuff over from the old building at Stafford High School, and, and, and of course, you're not. Now, when, just the other thing that some of the constituents asked me is, well, when they built Mountain View, and when they built Colonial Forge, you know, for the parity issue that we hear, you know, did they also use some of their old equipment, or was it all new?
Well, as you know, those are new schools, based on growth.
Those were brand-new schools.
So they were brand-new schools, so they're, well, that answers my question there.
That's right.
Way to go, Army. So your answer is no. They didn't, so the answer is no, they didn't use old equipment. That's what only I wanted to hear.
That's correct, sir.
Right, okay, so, so no, the answer is no, they didn't use old furniture. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Haran concerning this item? I did have, go ahead.
This furniture, is it any particular target in this buy, or is this all the furniture?
No, sir, this is specific to Priority One and Four items, as, as identified in the agenda item. Tried to, tried to keep it in, in the same kind of discussion and layout as I provided in the update, so you could track it in what we're trying to do. Because there'll be another effort that we come forward to the board with some additional furniture as we progress.
I just wanted to make sure that was said, because...
Yes, sir.
Like Dwayne, I get those questions an awful lot, too, of folks saying, oh, we're getting this, we're just taking the same old furniture over there, so, you know, the queers paying attention, I understand.
Right, now, there'll be some additional furniture coming.
Mr. Haran, I'm, I'm a little confused now, because down here, it says it's Priority One and Five, which is new spaces, programming, library, and the administration and counseling area, new furniture. Is that, in fact, what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Did I say four?
Yeah, you did say four.
It was my mistake.
And, and is there some reason why we're, we're doing those first?
It's just those are the ones that we are prepared to come forward to the board. We have those gathered, and so we want to, we don't want to wait. We want to get these things into the queue...
Upon them where you can.
And get them going. Yes, ma'am.
Got it. All right, any other questions?
Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you.
All righty. That takes us to staff reports. We have a couple. First, report to the school board on weather closures and makeup days. I would imagine this is Mr. Fitzgerald again.
I just copied it, because it happened off the sheets, I mean. I don't have to even think about it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson, we'd like to just bring to your attention the current status with regard to closures and makeup days for the current school year. And in that regard, I'll move forward with a lot of bit, a lot of information, and pretty data-heavy and data-rich information as well. This is a complete listing of the current status with regard to closures, what the total number of hours add up to in terms of instructional hours, and then what that equals in terms of actual comparable days. And so that would give you an overall idea. We, of course, last Friday was our last day out, and hopefully, when I say last, I really mean it. And I told, I told somebody today, I said, it's raining, it's wonderful, I love it, it's There are two basic methods that we can consider for makeups. There's the, what I call the traditional method, and before, the state had considered options along the lines of some type of waiver or some kind of alternate. This was the usual and customary practice. And the goal up there in red says nine hundred and ninety hours, and that's the minimum requirement instituted by the state, Virginia Department of Education, and state standards of quality and of accreditation. So that's our objective. So if we start the year and look at the total number of instructional hours that we have set aside by virtue of the number of minutes that each level has, you'll see that elementary started this year with, with one thousand thirty-one and a quarter minutes, middle, one thousand and thirty, high school, one thousand and thirty-nine. And I won't go back to all of the details that apply in those calculations, I'll just say in summary that we're not counting travel time at the middle and high school, and/or lunch, for the most part. And at elementary, we also cannot count recess when we come up with that. We also might remember that a couple of years ago, we added some time to elementary to help mitigate some issues that came about with some, some shortages of bank time. All right, so we, we keep track of how many minutes and hours that that equals up to in terms of our end-of-year balance, and right now, the end-of-year shows that elementary will finish the year, if we don't do anything at all right now, in terms of, and just maintain our already-approved calendar for this year, we would, we would only meet the nine hundred seventy-one, seventy-five, point seventy-five for elementary, and you can see nine seventy and a half for middle, and nine seventy-nine for the high school. All right, so how can we make that up, given that we want to get to nine ninety? And the chart that follows, we already have on the back of our calendar, you know, we list those makeup days. So if we follow that as a guide, we end up with basically going through the twelfth with eliminating all early releases and going full days. Right now, the eleventh and twelfth were already established with early releases, and you could literally put in there, you know, makeup. But we're eliminating all early releases, all the way through, we have to go the extra two days that is built into the calendar for makeups. We'd have to go the fifteenth and sixteenth, and as well, complete those days as full days as well. So no early releases for the rest of the year, and add June fifteenth and sixteenth, if we were to follow the traditional model for makeup. Then when we start talking about this other method, the waiver method, I think it's important to know what the state says in that regard. Again, I don't like reading to you, but this is a factor in maintaining the Commonwealth's Basic Aid Fund, because we have to follow this. If we don't, then we could be subject to losing funding, and we don't want to do that. So the bottom line is, is that when severe weather conditions occur that resulted in closing of the school or school division for six days or more, and we do meet that criteria this year, the division shall, and I put the bold in, this shall make up the first five days, plus one day for each, two days missed in excess of the first five. And you can do that by adding days, or you can extend the length of the school day. So when we look at this, keep in mind, we're, we, we have that as an additional option if we want to extend, but we've already extended the day since the beginning of the year. So we have some built-in extended time already in place. That's what we're going to look at now. Okay, so following that model, we've been closed fifty-nine and a half hours, we want to, we have to, in some way, deal with creating ten point eight-two days to make up for it, an equivalent of that. And so following the waiver, you can see that the first five days, we may, we make up, then we skip the sixth, then we make up the seventh, skip the eighth, make up the ninth, skip the tenth, and then make up the eleventh. And what that does for us, that basically gives us, if we use our minimum bank time, which was the thirty-seven at the middle school, then that, we are able to meet our, our days made up. Once you get down, though, to the day nine, we're short one and a half hours. So we would have to make up some time then. And then, once we get down to day eleven, again, we're short the entire seven hours at that particular point. And then we ultimately, and that's the balance on, on day eleven, we need eight and a half hours to get to the total number of hours needed. And how can we do that with the waiver method? And basically, we can go through, make up the early releases by not having early releases all the way through June the twelfth. So the difference between the two, really, is that we have no early releases between now and June the twelfth on either the traditional or the waiver. The traditional, however, you have to go the extra two days, full days, whereas, in the waiver method, uh, your last day would be June, uh, June the twelfth, but with no early releases. So those are the two options that I'm presenting this evening and, and, uh, as representative for staff and for superintendent, and with that, um, there are many variations, many variations. I mean, uh, you can, you can add days, you can take from spring break, uh, and I know that was blasphemy to say that, but...
Third rail.
That's right. So there are, and you can add minutes, and there are just a variation on, on, uh, ways that we can accomplish this school. This is the, probably the simplest, uh, easiest to understand and less, um, less complex, uh, but, um, this is the, the two methods that are being presented for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Fitzgerald concerning this. I have one. Actually, it's more of a concern that's been expressed by more than one of our building administrators, um, to me, and it has to do, um, more with the high school and the middle school students than it would, of course, to the elementary. And the concern has to do with, um, adding the time at the end, it doesn't allow for preparation for testing, um, particularly AP testing, IB testing, uh, a lot of hours, a lot of days have been lost in relation for, uh, test preparation, and if you add most of the lost time in after June first, um, it doesn't allow for that, uh, additional preparation. Was that discussed during the count, during the deliberations here?
We've had considerable, um, attention paid to that particular one variable. How can we manage to avoid adding time at the end and, and having it more so up front? And I can, I can share with you as an example, too, to get back to our original schedule, uh, that we're on right now and manage it through the end of the year, we would have to add approximately thirty minutes, um, to, to the day, um, beginning right after spring break. And so, again, considerations, uh, and variations on various, um, methods are always there. It is, it is a problem.
Even with the waiver method, you'd still have to add thirty minutes?
Uh, right, let's see, wait a minute.
I did a quick calculation, I didn't think it was quite that much, but I may have been wrong.
I think it's more like ten minutes, isn't it?
Well, no, it's ten minutes if you, if, if you want to, um, Teresa, are you around?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I figured around ten minutes if you do the waiver.
But the ten minutes, the ten minutes will give you the early releases at the end of the year, but they do not give you the early releases and all the time up front.
No, I, I'm, I'm...
Right. The ten minutes gives you the early releases at the end of the year, the thirty minutes gives you the current schedule, that's the difference.
Yeah, okay, that, that's kind of where I was going, yeah. Are there any other questions for Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah, if we do, of course, add the time on for the high school, um, how do we deal with the bus scheduling? Because obviously, we've got multiple booths.
Do you have to add time for everybody?
Adding time on, you, you add time on to all levels.
Okay, wouldn't just be for the high school, okay.
Right, certainly, just shifts.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, no, if we did that, I know, I thought we were specifically talking about the needs of the high school students, so...
If you, if you released high school early, and you do have some flexibility in that by looking at, for example, the traditional method, you can see that the, if you look right here at the nine, the, the high school meets their nine ninety, uh, on June the twelfth. So they, they could technically, uh, not even have to report on the fifteenth or sixteenth if that were the case. I don't know if you want to really do that, that, that becomes problematic in, in man, in ways that, I don't know, we, you'd probably have to want to consider what that does. For example, high school kids being home while the middle and the ju, elementary are still in school, but those are just some factors.
God knows what they'd be up to.
No trailing.
I mean, goodness gracious, how could they be home?
Right. But if you look at the waiver method, you can see that the middle school and the high school would, um, would meet their hour requirement on June the eleventh, so they could have the, the twelfth off on, uh, on, on an early release, whereas the elementary would have to go the extra, uh, on, on that day. So again, variations, uh, with some possibilities of adjustment for early releases.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just, oh, am I recognized?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said, "Wait a minute."
No, go for it.
Um, no, I, I, there's been a lot of work done, uh, this is a hot topic, there's been a lot of work done, so, I mean, good job. I, I, I think I would like to see that adding the ten minutes at the end of the day also kind of brought back, uh, for our review. When's the drop dead, when do we really kind of have to?
Make a decision.
When's your take? I mean, before spring break, I mean...
Yes, uh, yeah, everything falls, falls on the, uh, adjustments to the schedule as a result of June, uh, excuse me, April the thirteenth, I think that is the first day after spring break, that we would want this, if we're going to extend the days, that's what our calculations are based on, from there through the end, uh, middle of June.
I mean, I, I would, Madam Chair, I would kind of want to hear from the SCA and hear from some other of the teachers and, uh, parents about, you know, hey, is ten minutes the way to go, or is that more palatable? If, you know, if we can get it done in different ways, and, you know, this is a method, um, so that, that, I, I would like to see some ten minutes come back and see what are the pros and cons of that.
I have a tendency to agree with that, I would like to see what, what that might look like if we were to add on. Ms. Healy?
Yeah, I would also like to see when you come back with the ten minutes, what the teachers and administrators' feelings are with respect to that being a plus for instructional time before those, uh, those testing dates in May, because I, you know, my, my natural inclination would be to take the route of just not having the early out since we're in school anyway. Um, but if the administrators and the teachers feel that that would be in the best interest of the students, and there's, um, you know, general consensus on that, I'd be willing to, you know, go that way. And I, I also heard from, um, some of the administrators that were very concerned about the, the great loss of instructional time this year, uh, and, and the potential impact on the, the testing that's going to be here before we know it.
Just a real quick add-on, and the sport, and the sports schedules, uh, it's a lot, when you add ten minutes, there's a lot of stuff going on, so I, please, please make sure we look at that and...
Any other questions, um, from Mr. Fitzgerald on this one? Okay, um, that takes us to, thank you so much. That takes us to our next report, um, this is the climate survey, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen climate survey. Mr. Fitzgerald, you just have all kinds of stuff you're sharing with us tonight. Next.
It's al, it's almost as fun as having Mr. Haran up here, I mean...
I know.
I mean, you know.
I'd like to invite up our three major, um, individuals who have been, uh, particularly involved with this effort to, uh, review school climate, um, and if I could ask Teresa Aberg, Dr. Pat Waddell, and Robin Gardner, could you please?
Teresa.
Teresa, come on up, come on up. Very good to have you. Um, good evening again, uh, once more, we'd like to bring you an item. Uh, tonight, we bring you a workforce total rewards program component, uh, that refers to work-life and school climate. Uh, we recognize this as a critical area of, of, uh, understanding and importance as we work with our employees. Um, I'd like to introduce our presenters this evening in relates, in, in relation to school climate, uh, Dr. Teresa Aberg, uh, human resources supervisor, uh, Ms. Teresa Thompson, Virginia Education Association, uh, and SCA Stafford Education Association President, and then also Dr. Patricia Waddell, and, uh, those three have been significant in coordinating this effort from the beginning. Uh, they have been, in essence, our steering committee as it applies to, uh, engagement in our schools, and engagement, you remember, is equal to what? Enthusiasm, and enthusiasm means student success. So I'd like for, if we could, uh, to ask them to come forward.
It is our pleasure to be here this evening to share the results of our climate survey. We have been working on this project for approximately a year. It has been in the background, um, some, some developmental work being done for almost two years. Dr. Benson often chairs the five elements of a total rewards model, and this survey focused on work-life. Work-life balance is one of the most important workplace attributes, second only to compensation, according to research conducted by the Corporate Executive Board. Employees who feel they have better work-life balance tend to work twenty-one percent harder than those that don't. Schools with a positive climate have greater employee and teacher engagement, resulting in increased student engagement. Increased student engagement leads us to increased student achievement. Our Climate Advisory Committee, representing all stakeholder groups across all levels, including the SCA, created a timeline for implementation and the survey instrument. The instrument was shared with administrators and with our stakeholder groups for feedback prior to implementation. The survey was administered during American Education Week in November. Twenty-three questions include, plus the work location, it took approximately ten minutes to complete. The survey was sent to three thousand six hundred employees, and two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven completed the survey, which is approximately a sixty-five percent response rate, which is pretty good in the world of surveys. Um, and the survey instrument is attached for you. This is the, these are the strengths and opportunities. This is baseline data. The strengths are the highest combined percentages of agree and strongly-agree responses, and the opportunities are the highest combined percentages of disagree and strongly-disagree responses. And attached to the agenda item was the full survey with the division data for you. Our follow-up professional development included committees from each school and department joining us for a half-day meeting. These meetings were held in December and January. The data was reviewed, and each school and department is working on an action plan. The template for that action plan was also attached to the agenda item for you. It's important for us to celebrate the successes, but have open discussion about the opportunities available for improvement. Resources were shared on building trust and various ways to facilitate communication, and we've included two of those links for you. Some pictures from our, our half-day meeting. One principal commented how the survey had really helped them become better at what they do. "I've really made a diff, it's really made a difference and changed my practices," and that's really what we wanted to have happen, was the conversation. Our next steps, we need to find time and resources to continue to work on our action plans. We will refine our survey instrument. There was, for example, one question that asked two questions that needs to be separated. It is a work in progress. We do want to support school and department leaders in the process. We're doing that, for instance, through all administrator and principal meetings. We have a follow-up session planned for April, and schools are able to do progress checks on specific topics at the end of the year. School nutrition has actually taken this a step farther and administered the survey to not only their managers and assistant managers, but every person working in the kitchens, and is analyzing that data as a division and by school. We will survey again in November two thousand fifteen to see where we've grown, as this is a collaborative process with an emphasis on continued improvement. Thank you.
Okay, questions?
I'd just like to say that, what a, what a great, uh, presentation and brief.
Thank you.
But we, for the people in the audience, we do have a thick handout with, uh, all the responses to the questions. Well, you know, you know, as Americans, we, you know, we, we value work, you know, work is kind of our li, life, you know, for some, it's family work, it's God, whatever, but we are known to work and we work hard, and, and there's a triad, I think, at all, um, you know, when, when you ask a guy, you know, "Who's your best friend?" You know, it, it's, it's not, I'd like to say, I'd like to, like Scott Hirons, "Hey, Scott, how you doing?", to be a neighbor, but it's not. He's not my best friend. It's always someone at work, you know, it's always, so it's so important, that whole triad, that whole, um, you see how I kind of slipped that in?
You want to just stop now while you're ahead? You want to keep going?
That whole, you know, it's, it's pay, it's pay, it's leadership, and, and it's the climate, it's the folks that you work with that really make your life enjoyable, uh, I think, you know, for, for me, speaking for me, and, and so this is a great step forward in that, in working on that triad, uh, pay, leadership, and, and, and climate.
Thank you, Mr. McCoster. Now we know who your best friend is.
They can tell us.
I know, I...
I know, it's not...
It's Vanessa, right?
Yes.
There you go.
It's my wife, is my best friend.
You better say that.
Camera, did you get that?
The animal shelter has some dogs for a dog. Dr. Aberg, never thought I'd say that. I know this was, this year, it's kind of baselining where we are. To me, as I start looking through the data and, and that's received, it, it kind of says, "We're okay, we, we have folks that like to work here." But I hear an awful lot of the opposite of that. Where can we attribute where the communication is lost or the, that the reality doesn't match the survey results? And is that a func, just a function of surveys themselves? And where do we have opportunities to grow in the coming year?
I'm, I'm going to jump in, if that's all right, Dr. Aberg.
Very, okay.
So this is aggregate data, right? And, and you know, when you look at aggregate data, you don't, you, you really can't really drill into areas, either where, you know, where we've got successes or areas that we see as, as opportunities for growth, and that's where the work is, okay? Uh, we did say, uh, Dr. Aberg addressed this earlier on, that, that this is baseline data that we've collected, and it is part of our expectation to have really positive, supportive climates in all of our workspaces, whether they're schools or departments. We want, we want to have this everywhere, because it is critical in terms of recruiting and retaining folks. We want folks to, we want to be known as having a very positive, supportive, uh, work environment, and we want folks to experience that when they're here, um, with us. But it is aggregate data, and, and I, as a division, I mean, we are doing pretty well, and there are places in here, I think, probably where we could certainly say there's an opportunity for growth as well. However, it's aggregate data, okay? And so, there are places within the division where there are more opportunities for, um, for growth than in some other places within the school division. We recognize that. Our job is to help our building-level leaders and our department heads, uh, work with folks in their schools to, to, to build more of that positive climate in, in a way that is, is very targeted and, um, and collaborative, in that it involves the stakeholders in the, in the schools. They had, folks have to be involved in trying to figure out what, what would it look like if we were doing better in this particular area. So, you know, I would like to feel that I have an opportunity to contribute to the direction and thinking about how to do things better within my area of influence. I think most employees would like to have that opportunity. There are places that we probably can do a better job with that across the division. So we're, we're not sharing the disaggregated, disaggregated data with the, with the board at this time, we want to give folks an opportunity to, to work on that, uh, data moving forward, uh, and, and that's where the real work is. So I appreciate what Mr. Hirons is saying about, you know, as a division, we look pretty good, that doesn't mean we don't have places that where we need to work to, um, to improve, opportunities to grow, and, uh, we're, we're, we're helping folks figure out how to do that.
Could I speak to that just a minute, because that, that's kind of some of the, the, the comments and questions that I wrote down as you were going through your presentation, which, by the way, was lovely. Uh, we talked about the, the committee and, and how you form the committees, and then the action plans, and I see the template here for the action plan, and then reporting back, um, and, um, and I'm sure a lot of this, uh, action plan data will be kept at, at the school level as well, and then you talked, uh, particularly, uh, Dr. Benson, you talked about those areas where, where they, uh, need some improvement, getting support. Can you give me, for instance, what kind of support? Because it, it appears to me that if, if there is, uh, for example, a leadership opportunity, uh, within a school that needs some support, specifically, what, what do we do? How do we, how do we address that?
It is very individualized, because the, you know, where we have successes and opportunities for growth is going to vary from one location, uh, to another. One, one of the key elements here in, in being successful in using climate survey data to improve climate is to be very open and to involve stakeholders in helping to figure out how this would look different, better, moving forward. So let's just say that there was a survey out there about your superintendent, and we had a large number of folks that felt like I was not a very good instructional leader, okay? I can't fix that by myself.
No, no.
I need to talk to stakeholders to figure out what it is, what is it that would be different? If we, if I were doing a better job in that area, what would that look like? Uh, and, and, and folks need to be part of, of offering up solutions, and, and that's what we've tried to do, is create an environment that is open, uh, we've, we've asked building-level leaders to share successes, but also to share, uh, areas for their challenges, and then ask for, uh, support from their teams and from, uh, staff in general as to what would that look like, how would it be better if we were moving, moving in a more positive direction in that, with that particular indicator. Um, I've had some experience in using similar surveys in other divisions, and I know this, okay? A building-level leader as an individual or a department head chair cannot fix this by themselves, okay? And, and part of the thing is that... And part of the thing is that they could do all of this work, and stakeholders in the department or school could say, yeah, well, you really kind of didn't get it, and you really didn't ask us about how it would, would look if you were doing a better job in this, in this area. So, we want folks to, you know, use their time effectively as well, which means, you know, it needs to be a very open, very open process. And I commend, you know, everyone that's been involved in getting this going within the division. But I really have to put it out there, heartfelt thank you to the, to the folks that, you know, put their data out in a, in a way that is, it's a little uncomfortable, okay? If, you know, if you have areas where staff might not feel you're doing a great job, there's an opportunity for growth, to put yourself out there and say, hey, okay, I get it, there's an opportunity for us to do better here. Help us figure out what that would look like and how can we improve as a school or as a department? And that, that takes some real leadership.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's interesting that we sort of end on this topic tonight. What I think is so interesting, and I think anybody who has watched our school board meetings since April 1st of last year, when Dr. Benson came to us, I feel like this has been a year, not quite a year, of a division that's going to look at itself. And I think that's something that is critical to any organization, no matter what it is. And I have just been really impressed that we've decided to take a look at ourselves, and in the coming months, we're going to be looking at efficiency and all kinds of different things. And then, taking that data and that, and making, taking the next step, I think it takes a lot of courage for everybody to look at themselves and such. And I hope, again, I know we have had so many things on our plates, and everybody is, has been busy, but I do hope that our board will get back to the information item that was brought forward earlier on governance for us, and for us to start looking at governance from a board perspective as well. Because it appears that, you know, many parts of the division are looking at themselves, how can we do things better? And I hope that we, as a board, will move that forward and find that time for us to start that dialogue in the coming month or two.
I believe that is an agenda item, and now that we're getting further along with the budget and further along with some of these other things that we can, we can address again. I think there was some desire on the board. And I think it would be helpful to, there may be some survey results that could be helpful to the board as well. So, thank you very much for that information. And that takes us to our next meeting, which will be the 24th of March. It will start at 5:30 with a work session, regular session at 7 o'clock. Please be aware that on the 17th of March, we will be presenting our budget. As it looks currently, we are on the schedule for the 3 o'clock meeting. However, we're trying to negotiate that to a later meeting, not only so that board members can attend, but also so that other folks that are working will have an opportunity to attend as well. That takes us into closed session. Madam Vice Chair, could you read us into close, please?
Sure. Pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice pursuant to Section 2.2, 317A7 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Thank you. That takes us into closed session.